Good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It is Wednesday, January 12, 2022. It is 1:38 PM. This meeting is in Building 1, Room 280. And it is being livestreamed on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I am Carolina Mahia, Chair of the Board. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards. To his left is County Manager Ramiro Chavez. On Zoom, I am seeing Robin Campbell, our Assistant County Manager, and Joshua Cummings, our Director of Community Planning and Development, as well as other staff members. So today, we are doing the 2022-2023 Preliminary Dockets and Development Code and Comprehensive Plan Amendments. So with that, I will hand it over to Ramiro. Josh?
Yeah, Commissioner, this is the beginning of our yearly process. In this case, you will consider elements to be added to the 2022-2023 Preliminary Docket, as you stated. I say "added," perhaps continue on with some of the items that have already been included. This is the first step in the process. We do not expect for you to weigh in, but staff is going to walk you through what the next steps are. So this is just the beginning of a couple of steps the Board needs to consider.
This says "decision needed," but maybe that's not exactly right.
Well, "decision needed," where there is, I think, the next step is to make it available to the public.
Absolutely.
And all that. So this point is not a decision we will approve the docket, because approval of the docket comes a little bit later.
Okay. I forgot to mention, our bags chair, Ty Manser, is running a couple of minutes behind, and he'll be joining us here soon.
Josh?
So Josh Galton.
Excellent, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for the overview there also, County Manager Chavez. So yes, this is the, we're on a two-year cycle. And every two years, we essentially, for the Commissioners, wipe the slate clean and bring everything that we hear in terms of topics from our community. Every year annually, we make sure that what you want in terms of priorities, the Commissioners, we're aligning to that. And the way to think about the dockets is another name for "list," just using the word "list." And we essentially have two big lists, the Comprehensive Plan List and the Development Code Docket List, docket list, as it were. And keeping in your mind that the Comprehensive Plan, as we've talked about in the past, is the vision for our community. What do we want our community to look like in terms of land use and zoning and the way that we work together and the vision for our community? The Development Code Docket is really where the rubber meets the road in implementing that vision, that mission. So two lists. And of this process, you're going to hear first from Chris, a little more detail and language about how these dockets work. And then you'll hear from Maya, all the items that we have kind of put in the big bucket right now that we've received from the community or from staff or from Commissioners' direction. And the request is not going to be whether or not you think that the list items are good or bad. The next step is going to be having a conversation with the community. And so getting your thumbs up on the community's input on all of these items. So not trying to steal too much thunder, but don't make it too hard using, because of the fancy language with dockets and all that kind of stuff. It's just two lists, one for the vision, one for the mission. And this is just the very beginning stage of that process. Chris, you want to take it away? Did I take too much of what you were going to say?
No, that's great, thanks. Great setup. As we come into this process before the Board has done this a couple of times. In 2020, the Board went through this really long, cumbersome list that we had. And that's when we did a collation and culling of a lot of that information that's on that list and created this two-year docket cycle. And we want to thank the Board for helping staff and community planning to get on a regular cycle for this so that it is something that's certain for the public so they know what's going to happen and how it's going to move forward. As Josh mentioned, the Comprehensive Plan is a list of things that could change. But the docket is a list of things that could change in our Comprehensive Plan, and that is our vision for the county. Because those policies are not written in stone. They are guided by the Growth Management Act. They are guided by other laws. They are subject to local interpretation in how the community wants to move forward and what are those community priorities. Each year, the legislature passes new regulations. The Board establishes new policies. And staff finds areas where we can improve customer service or the citizens want to change how those land uses in development regulations work. It's our adaptive management for our visioning for the county. We're not stale or stagnant. In 2020 and 2021, we accomplished a lot. We got 12 projects done over the two-year cycle. And those were some very complicated and large projects for the community. So that was a great success that we had. And today, we start the two-year docket cycle over again. The Board resets everything. We reset our priorities. And we have those successes again. But as a result of our successes, we also have a very large preliminary docket. So you will see in Maya's presentation that there were some items that did not get completed in the last docket cycle. And as I said, because of our successes, there have been a number of applications received for new items to be placed on that docket. So Maya will present the overview, some detail of the information and what our next steps are. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have. Maya?
Actually, let me jump in real quick one more time. Chris made a very good point, and I want to just reiterate that. This is the second time that we've engaged this two-year cycle process. And the Board's direction, two and a half years ago, to get onto this consistent path has really created a lot of success. And so I want to echo Chris's appreciation to the Board of County Commissioners for assisting and helping this process be consistent for the community. That's where our successes are coming from. So as we work through this process, recognize that this is relatively new, but there was a backlog that was created over the 10 years from the Great Recession that created a huge preliminary docket. And that we've worked through that, and it has shrunk. But it will grow, because now the word is out that we have a consistent process for our community. And so people are accessing it. So as we work through the backlog, it's also expanding because of the success. But this is just that first step. And so I'll stop talking and give it to Maya.
Great, thank you. Maya Tippel, Senior Planner with Community Planning. So I'm going to share my screen here. And hopefully, my PowerPoint is visible to everyone now. This is a two-hour briefing, and there will be plenty of time for questions to go through, any questions that the Commissioners may have. But as was mentioned by Josh and Chris and also the County Manager, this is a briefing on the 2022-2023 Preliminary Dockets. And as was stated, we have two lists. One is for Comprehensive Plan Proposals and one is for Development Code Changes. This is a reset year. So we're finishing up the 2020 to 2021 cycle. And anything that was incomplete in that last cycle rolls over for the Board to reconsider in the docketing process this year. And before I get started on this presentation, I do want to just go over the materials that were included for today's briefing. So there is a briefing document, and that summarizes the number of proposals and the process. It's a very short, couple pages document. Just has high-level numbers on it. Thank you, Josh. And then the second document is the Attachment Packet. And that includes the sheet, the preliminary docket sheet, on the very front. And there are two sections to this packet. The first half of the packet is the Comprehensive Plan Proposals. Behind that front sheet that Josh is holding up are one-page project descriptions that just has what the request is, where it is in the county, very basic information on the proposal. And then about halfway through that packet, beginning on page 17, is where the Development Code Preliminary Docket List is located. And behind that are the same type of project descriptions. And you'll see, as Josh is holding up, the Development Code List is a little bit different color. That starts on page 17. So as we're talking about the proposals towards the end of this brief, feel free to refer to that packet. We can pause and shuffle through it and go through any questions you have, once we get to the proposals. So today's briefing will cover and overview the docketing process. This is largely a refresher, since we go through this every year. But as Josh and Chris both stated, you know, the direction from the Board has changed in early 2020. So we are moving through with a two-year cycle. And we do thank the Board for that, that has made the process a lot more efficient. I'll go through a very high-level summary of the proposals. This is just to introduce these to the Board. It's not to get into the nitty-gritty of the details of each of them or the merits of each of them. We're just introducing what the requests are, both carryover items from the last official docket and also new items that we received in the last year from our citizens and community. I'll answer questions about the process and also about the proposals. And the next steps following this briefing today, the direction we're requesting from the Board is whether or not to move preliminary dockets forward to public comment. So the next step will be a public review and comment period. And all the dockets and all the proposals will be available to take citizen input on them. So going through what the process looks like for docketing, this is a step ladder that you've likely seen before. We show this every year at the beginning of our annual docketing process. And we're at the very top of this slide where we're doing our preliminary docket review. And this is the step where staff takes all the proposals that we've received throughout the calendar year, new applications and also applications and proposals that were not finished in the last docket cycle. And we bring that information to the Board and provide a refresher and an overview of what all of those proposals are. And that includes both changes to the Comprehensive Plan and to the Development Code. And today's briefing is really just a general review of those proposals. But following that, the next step is the 20-day written comment period. So at today's briefing, the Board can request small changes to these items or new items be added. And once staff tidies up those preliminary dockets, we will publish them on our website for the public to review and will accept written comments for 20 days. There is no public hearing. It's just a written comment period. And following that, we'll take all the comments. Community Planning will compile those and will bring them back to the Board for your review. And that is when the discussion starts on what items the Board would like to see on the official docket and what the priorities of the Board are. So that nitty-gritty conversation about what we want to work on over the next two years, that doesn't happen until after we have that comment period. So today's conversation is, what are these proposals? Do you have questions about them? And then the next steps are that 20-day written comment period. So I do want to note that this is just the very first stage of the legislative process. And the county can't legislate something if it's not on the official docket. So this really sets the work plan for community planning. And after we get through this full process and we adopt an official docket at a Tuesday Board meeting, we move through the legislative process with both the Planning Commission and the Board. And that's not shown here, but there's another two pages to this step ladder that we will work through, once we have that official list. So what are the dockets? Josh covered this in great tune, so I will just speak to this briefly. But we have two separate lists. And we talk about each of these at the beginning of each year. And both of these lists, the same staff works on them. So most of these items are worked on by the Growth Management Services Team in the Community Planning Division. We do have some other staff throughout Community Planning that are working on these items. But the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket is the list of proposals that are requesting to change the Comprehensive Plan, any map in the Comprehensive Plan, or also specialized plans that are part of that document, like our joint plans or our sub-area plans. And there are a number of requests that we often see that request changes to the future land use and zoning of properties. Those are all changes to the Comprehensive Plan. So they all fall on this comp plan docket, and that sets the vision for the county. And then the second list is the Development Code Docket. And that includes proposals that want to change the development regulations. And as Josh mentioned, that is really where the rubber meets the road. That's where the policies and the comp plan are applied practically. It sets the building code, the permitting structure. So that is the regulatory information that guides the county's growth. And only amendments from specific chapters within the Thurston County Code need to be docketed. So Chapter 2.05 does go into detail about what chapters of the Thurston County Code that are impacted need to go through the docketing process. Some of those, just to cover, are ESIPA chapter, critical areas, plots and subdivisions, and then our zoning ordinance. So several titles, but not all of them need to be docketed. So. So why do we docket? As I mentioned before, in order for the Board to legislate anything, it first must be placed on the docket of work. And then it moves through a review process where the public can weigh in on the specific proposal with both the Planning Commission and the Board. And the dockets are really a list of items that set the work plan and possible projects that the Board might consider over the next two years. So this is a process that's required under the Growth Management Act. And it's also spelled out in the Thurston County Code. Again, Chapter 2.05 lays out the docketing process. And this really helps to ensure early public participation. So citizens can see what the county might be working on over the next two years. And that helps to maintain transparency with the public about what proposals might be going through review in the upcoming timeframe. And this also sets the work plan for the Community Planning Growth Management Services Team. This helps us allocate our budget and our staff time based on the priorities that are set by the Board. So just to recap, what is the decision that we're looking for today? So today's briefing is really an opportunity for the Board to ask questions on proposals, to ask to change how something is named, to add a board-initiated item to either of the dockets, and to move forward with the 20-day comment period. So the next request that we have as staff and the direction we're looking for is when to open that public comment period. As I mentioned, today is not the time for the Board to begin discussing details and merits on any single proposal or to talk about adding or removing them. We will schedule a separate briefing that will be after that 20-day written comment period closes. And at that briefing is when we will review the comments in a little bit more detail and also discuss adding or removing proposals at the Commissioner's request. So as I mentioned at the beginning, that packet of attachments that includes the preliminary dockets and the one-page sheets, this includes all of the proposals that we received in 2021 that are new and also all carryover items from the last official dockets that were not complete. So everything that we received that needs to be docketed is included in that packet. And we are requesting the comment period direction from the Board no later than next Tuesday. But you're welcome to provide that direction as early as this briefing, if you feel comfortable doing so. So after that 20-day written comment period, as I mentioned, Community Planning will schedule a follow-up brief, will go over all the public comment that we received. And the Board will have three options for each proposal. The first is to include it on the official docket. The second is to keep it on a preliminary docket for possible future work. So then it'll be revisited in a future calendar year. And the third option is to remove the proposal altogether from further consideration. And that removes it not only from an official docket, but also from the preliminary docket. So removing does not bring it back in a future year for consideration. And these decisions aren't available to you today, but they will be available after that 20-day written comment period. So the reason we wait until after that public comment period is not only to give the public an opportunity to weigh in on the list of proposals, but also it provides a better idea of how much public engagement we can expect to see on some of these proposals. So sometimes we get an item that has a lot of public interest. And the docketing might be telling of what level of public engagement we might see on an item, which can determine how quickly or slowly it moves through the legislative process, if it is officially docketed. So getting into the proposals, this is just a summary slide. And we have 34 total proposals this year on the preliminary dockets. This pie chart shows a breakdown of those. So most of those 34 items are in this yellow, and those are carryover items from the last official dockets that were not complete. So roughly 23 items. This yellow part on this pie chart are from the last official dockets. That's about 2/3 of our total proposals that we're talking about today. The blue, gray, and red, which makes up a total of 11 items, are either new proposals, whether they're citizen-initiated or staff-initiated, or they're carryover from a previous preliminary docket. So breaking that down a little bit more, the blue area is our new comp plan proposals. So breaking that down a little bit more, the blue area is our new comp plan proposals. We received seven of those in twenty twenty one. So those are brand new, never considered in a docketing process before. We received two new code amendments. That's this gray here. And uh, likewise, those are brand new and never considered through the docketing process before. And then two uh, preliminary carryover items. So last year, the board left two items on the preliminary docket. Both of those were code amendments and that is this red wedge right here. So all in all, eleven new proposals or carryover from preliminary that were not actually docketed in the past. And twenty three carryover officially docketed items from the last cycle that were incomplete or are restarting because they're an annual update. So looking at our successes and capacity. Um, as Chris mentioned, we had a lot of success over the last docket cycle. And part of that success is thanks to the board setting a two year cycle, which really allowed us to hammer through a lot of these proposals, but we got twelve proposals done. And that might not seem like a lot, but a lot of those proposals that we got done were very big ticket items. So just to go through some of those, uh, the Tumwater Joint Plan, which the board took action on late last year. The comprehensive plan update was complete in twenty twenty. We also uh, saw the board adopt the Rochester Subarea Plan Update. An amendment to the recycled asphalt policy within the Squali Subarea. And also accessory dwelling unit standards. So all of those items were really big ticket items. A lot of them had significant public engagement, and those were huge successes over the last docket cycle. There are also a number of smaller code amendment requests that we got from citizens, and those were complete as well. So with that said, what is our capacity over the two year docket cycle? These are purely estimates, so uh, we estimate based on a lot of things, but uh, this number really depends on how smoothly a project moves and the level of public engagement can change. Um, planning commission review can change, and there might be other unforeseen issues that make a project take a little bit longer and can change the timing of that. But we've crunched the numbers and based on the staff hours of each type of project that we see. We estimate that each employee can complete about one to two proposals per year. And we have approximately five full-time employees in the community planning division that work on this type of work. Uh, most of those are in the growth management services team, but we also have a number of employees that are in other sections of community planning that dive into some of these projects. And each employee can take about one to two. And over the next two years, we estimate about ten to twenty proposals we could complete. So as a summary, uh, the list of proposals that are on the preliminary dockets today is thirty four for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three cycle. And twenty three of those are carryover from the last official docket with eleven of them being new, uh, new items from our community. So we're very cautious about how much we can bite off to get done. Especially since a lot of what is carryover and even some of the new proposals that we've seen come in are big ticket items. Uh, we've invested significant time into some of those items that are rolling over from the last official docket. And there are several items that are high priorities from planning partners, from citizens. Some are legally required, and we've already seen significant public interest on a number of the proposals. So just to go through a couple big ticket items, these are projects that might have a higher level of public engagement. Or they're uh, complicated and involve a lot of different components to it. Or have a complicated legal aspect. And some of those include the community driven ag review project. Uh, there's a significant amount of public interest in that project. The joint plans and UGA code updates. Um, we have three north county UGA joint plans, one of which the board took action on late last year. But the other two are uh, quite large projects. Uh, there can be a lot of public engagement on those. And then the Grand Mount Subarea Plan is another one that has had a lot of moving pieces to it, a lot of public engagement around it. Um, also the Nisqually Sub- Subarea Plan. And then I added some new proposals on here because we've had a lot new, of new proposals this year. But just based on similar proposals that we've had in the past. We can expect that there will be a high level of public engagement on some of these new items that are uh, that are requested if they were added to the official docket. And just to go over some of those new items would be some of the land use amendments that we've seen come in. And also a county wide study of industrial lands. We could expect probably a high level engagement on those. And big ticket items can take as long as two or three smaller items. Uh, sometimes they take several staff to work on them. And they can take several docket cycles, so they're not always complete in that two year cycle. Some titans, they take three or more years to work through just because of the public uh, engagement that goes into them. And the process moves a little bit more slowly for those. So now I'm gonna move into the list of proposals. And I will start with all of the items that are carryover from the last official docket. And I think what I'll do is I'll start on this slide. Um, for these, I'm not gonna go over in great detail what each one of them are because they are a carryover from the last official docket. But I'll open it up if the board has any questions on these five items that are on this slide right here. And this is the comp plan amendments, the board initiated section. Uh, so we have capital improvement program, community driven review of ag, Grand Mount Subarea Plan, joint plans, and also the Nisqually Subarea Plan. And after we have a little discussion on these, I'll move through a status update of each of them.
Let's also uh, pause just for a minute in terms of questions on the process. There was a lot about the process. Does the board have any questions on where we are and where we're going?
I, I have questions.
I have questions. But, okay, um, that's me, that's right. Um.
That's okay. Go ahead.
Commissioner Edwards, you have questions?
Okay, uh, using page ten here, community planning division, uh, right that you got up on the screen. Things like the Nisqually Subarea Plan. Uh, Grand Mountain Subarea Plan. The joint plan updates Tumwater Lempia Lacy. Actually, Tumwater is done, so we can scratch that. The ag policies, I think that's ours, and probably capital improvements. But, nobody has talked anything about many jurisdictions when they say they don't have enough time, and I'll roll back to page nine, you know, can, it says, can all thirty four be finished in two years? No, not with current staffing, about FTE, you know, five FTEs. Maybe one, one or two proposals per year, per FTE. So, but it's not mentioned in here that many jurisdictions allow the developer on some of these programs that are initiated by business, for an example. They know the growth management process probably better than most. A lot of uh, people that have worked either county or city government go to work for these folks. And they know how to move forward and do everything right. And uh, they can get the job done. And then the government can do those government jobs that I pointed out. That are government jobs, like, uh, I'll just use as an example, the Tumwater Joint Plan, which is now finished. So where are we at on the ability to utilize private enterprise to solve some of these problems so that we can get our economic engine going? And uh, do economic development and creating jobs and housing in a timely manner. That's kind of where I'm at.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner, for that question. We have had this conversation in the past. And we are, again, as we have stated earlier, really proud about the successes and the process that's in place to keep moving forward on a lot of these initiatives. And when Maya says we've got these twelve done, the done is the process. And the process is facilitated by our group to provide a third party assurance that it's not um, coming from the developer's standpoint, that the process is facilitated in a way that the entire community has an opportunity to weigh in. And that we believe that our third party process done by government staff employees, the five in community planning, actually helps the applicant in the end. Because everybody can be assured that the process was done in a manner that had no bias, as it were. And so we've had this conversation on what is your expectation of what we can hire as a consultant in the developer world? We continue to welcome your input on that topic. What we're talking about today is the process that hopefully leads to an outcome that can stand if challenged by the, a party that's opposed to an application in the future. So I guess I would ask back to you again, what are you asking for to be outsourced? Cause this is about the process. Is that your question?
I want quite a few things outsourced so that we can create jobs and adequate housing in our community in a timely manner. If we do a very limited number, yes, we can get those done. They're done well. But there's no uh, process that expedites it and goes through all of those things that you laid out that are requirements. Whether they're uh, input from concerned citizens or whatever it is. As long as they follow the Growth Management Act and we get it right. And that's very easy to do with these professional individuals that are uh, working on proposals that are presented that are not like that other list that I uh, talked about here. Like using Tumwater Joint Plan as an example. So I'm, I'm still there. If anybody's interested in creating jobs, building adequate housing, this is the way you have to do it. You go to any jurisdiction that's pushing things along to get things done. Uh, what it does, it takes all the control, not all the control, but it takes some of the control of dragging your feet away from folks that have an agenda. And I, I hate to say this, but we do end up with folks with an agenda. So uh, I think that this is the best way to go. We can still do all the government programs that are required. Uh, like the joint plans and the, you know, Grand Mountain uh, update and other areas.
Hey Maya, Maya, will you go back to the stair step slide, please?
The county manager does have his hand up.
County manager has his hand up. Go ahead, county manager.
So Commissioner, what you, you, you asked, where are we on that request, right? Um, and this is where we are in that request because the board discussed that request last year. And it was extensive conversation among all the three commissioners. And that's how you ended up on where we are. I don't want to uh, put any particular commissioner on, uh, put some words on their mouths. But the conversation gravitated, uh, Josh kind of sort of touched base on that as to why we're gonna be opening up. Uh, somebody who has the ability to pay versus others that may have not, and they're just going through the process. Secondly, I'd be, I'd recall the conversation was, what is the, the, the risk the county will have? And perhaps the ability uh, for um, the county just to give somebody free range to go through a public process. And then expect for the board to trust that third party during the public process for you to approve a particular item. So that conversation occurred last year. And so the, the answer to your question is, this is where we are. Obviously, you're, you like to explore that again, and that's something that you need to engage with your teammates as to where that goes this year.
That, that's fine. And uh, I would answer your question on how we would guarantee that. The county would retain oversight on the whole thing. And so it can be done. If you're interested at all in creating adequate housing and an economic engine to get things going. We have to do something besides just talk about it. That's the bottom line. So I just, I make that statement. I know there might be differing opinions, but that's the, that's what makes this country great.
Yeah, last, last year was totally different opinions, for sure.
I would, and I would go back to the applicants on the twelve applications that we completed. I would say that they would say that we have success. And again, the process is what we're working towards. Uh, I think I saw another hand though. Commissioner, here, did you have input?
I did not have input. I was gonna see if Commissioner Mansour had questions, but you're answering Commissioner Edwards' question, so go ahead.
I mean, the, the answer to the question remains the same, that our goal is to facilitate a process that gets rid of anybody's perspective that there is an agenda hidden or otherwise. That this first step of a three step process is what the board would like to provide the community in terms of the big preliminary list. The next checks and balances are from your planning commission and from input from the community and then the Board of County Commissioners discussion. So I just hearken to make a note that this process that the board engages in and that has been approved by the board is exactly what Commissioner Edwards asks to do, is to move the process along without an agenda. And I appreciate the team doing so with the direction of the board on what you like us to work on.
I'm not arguing that you're not doing what the board wants to do. You're just not doing what I want you to do. That's pretty simple.
Of democracy.
Yeah, I'm not beating around the bush here. I wanna get it, I wanna get it on. Let's get her done. Get her done. Let's get going, accomplish something. You guys have done very well, I might add, on sticking to that plan and getting your assignments done. I'm not being critical of that. I'm saying we can get more done by expediting the process with county oversight. I know it might take another vote on the board, you know, that's, that's what elections are all about. That's no problem. Uh, but I don't want anybody to think I forgot where I was coming from. I wanna build houses and create jobs.
No, no, so as, as Josh stated, there's gonna be um, more steps in the process in which the board can engage those conversations. Because at some point also, when you determine what elements you want, that they, you want staff to work on. Then the board needs to engage in a conversation set of priorities.
Yeah.
And that does, it is, it is a very uh, procedural steps that we need to take with the board. And again, this is the first step. Uh, it, it's just giving you the global understanding of uh, what we are carrying over, what new elements are gonna be requested by citizens. And where do you like to go for the public process to begin and start giving you some uh, feedback uh, on the citizens?
That's where I'm at. I'm with you a hundred percent. How we get there, I think is an option. We hire some more FTEs to make things happen. Uh, maybe we bill the developer for these, those FTEs. That's been done in the past. It's very common to do this. It's not very common to do it here in Thurston County. But we don't have very good housing and economic development. I see Commissioner Ty. Ty has his hand up though.
Go ahead, Commissioner Mansour.
Oh, I was just gonna say, now you're starting to talk my language, Commissioner Edwards, because uh, staff just presented this in a way I hadn't really seen before in terms of boiling it down to like FTE per project, you know, one FTE could do one to two projects in a year. So then my, my brain, then the math can start to work in my brain. Okay, how much would it cost for us to get two extra projects a year done? Okay, one FTE. I know about what an FTE costs. And we're, you know, having that versus us trying to provide oversight to a third party that's paid by an applicant. That's the problem. I mean, I'm with you on wanting to watch out for people with agendas. My concern is anytime you have someone pay, a paid consultant, and they're not doing anything wrong, it's, I've been a paid consultant, I, you know, it's what a lawyer is basically. Um, you know, you have, your, your job is to get that project to the finish line, come hell or high water. And you know, you use the laws and you know, the best you can. Doesn't mean you're doing unethical things, but you, you have an agenda. When you're getting paid to get a result from a, from a client, you have an agenda. So I'm much more comfortable spending resources to get more projects done, to get more housing built, to get more economic projects done of our own neutral staff that we can hire and we can provide oversight rather than making them. that we can hire and we can provide oversight, rather than making them provide oversight to someone else. You're just creating another layer. And then we're spending money, maybe half an FTE, to just provide the oversight for someone else's work who had an agenda when they did that work. And then half the time that work will have to be redone because they're trying to push the envelope too far or whatever. To me, it's much more efficient and neutral and protective of public interest to just hire the staffing we need to get the job that we want done. And if you want to talk about finding ways to, you know, we hired a ton of FTEs and a ton of different divisions and departments this year. And if you want to talk about prioritizing CPED planners for next year or whatever, I'm, that's a conversation that I'd be very excited to have.
Okay, I guess I have to finish up on that. I'm glad we agree. And I'm ready to make those hiring decisions right now. I don't want to wait until next year. I'll figure out a way we can review the budget. Is there something there? I'll use sales tax as an example. It's way up. Okay, let's use it to create more jobs, create more housing, and put somebody else on the payroll and get those two or three additional projects completed that'll get the economic engine running. I'm ready to do that. I'll make a motion today if I can get a second to make it move forward.
Now, this is, I think the next opportunity for you to consider will be the first quarter budget amendment.
Well, yes, it'd be the first quarter budget amendment, but I know how the system works. And the first quarter budget amendment, you better be prepared and have it ready to go by the time the first quarter budget amendment rolls into place. So you can say, this is what I want. And you don't wait, you don't get that by waiting until, uh, March or April. Or, well, the quarter, it'd be March. You don't wait, you don't wait until the end of March to decide that's what you're gonna do. You make that decision right now, that that's what you want to do. And then you're ready to go with that first quarter amendment.
See, our, uh, budget manager director is here.
Robin popped up.
Perspective on the, on the steps for amending the budget.
Robin, go ahead.
All right, uh, Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager. Um, the steps for amending the budget is for any officer department um, to enter into the budget system, a request for a change. Uh, that includes FTEs. Um, we're working on the calendar now of what those deadlines are. And usually that first amendment, uh, will be adopted by the board in mid to late April. But if, uh, if a commissioner, if the board should give direction that they want to see FTEs for CPED planning in that amendment, then we will ensure that those get in.
Um, I have a question. I know that there are some new treasury guidelines that came down. I was wondering if maybe they expanded on the backlog terminology to include anything else?
No, they did not.
But we do have a lot of sales tax. We, we can do that right now. We can make that motion and decision. Now, if, if it's legal, I'll make the motion. I don't care. I want to get something going.
Is it legal?
The board could certainly give direction to create FTEs at any time.
Let's go for two right now. I'm ready. I, if it's one thing I hate, it's the bureaucratic foot dragging of, uh, the government process when you can get her on, get her done, let's move ahead.
Unless we're trying to create more space for our employees.
Well, we don't have to worry about space because everybody's working from home. There's no cars out in the parking lot in case anybody's happened to go by and look lately. And if you go by and look at all the office space around this county, that state office space, big business office space, empty parking lots everywhere. So.
Because we had thirty-five-hundred COVID cases last week. And I will be back in the office just as soon as I possibly feel it's safe and appropriate to do so. Because I don't like being at home.
I'm ready to roll.
Me too. Um, so I would say that two planning FTEs will be somewhere in the range of about a hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred percent general fund.
Okay, you got one vote here for it.
I would want to see, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not willing to spend any more money than we did, you know, relative to our financial position as it was last fall. We already spent more than I wanted to spend. So I would be needing to see additional revenue that we didn't know about last fall or cuts to things that we did fund last fall before I would add another hundred and eighty thousand to the budget. But I'm open to either one of those, hearing either one of those things.
I would like to support budget plans too, but I, I'm right there, you know? I, I want to support CPED and the availability to get through all these thirty-four. Um, I, I definitely think it's, you know, they've been impacted with, you know, this whole backlog. They were just as impacted as any other department. I know I've asked Robin multiple times, uh, you know, how we can help and, um, I really am open to the idea, but I kind of want to see where the Excel sheet that Robin pulls up where, you know, that would kind of leave us. Um, so that's kind of where I'm at.
So maybe what we can, um, bring is adding, uh, two positions, um, to be considered during the first quarter budget amendment, if, if that is the desire by the board. And at that point, it will give you the opportunity to see what, uh, the, the new financial, uh, uh, outlook for the county is, whether there's new revenue or not. And because at this point, you know, providing a direction to create, uh, to put in the, in the first quarter budget amendment, uh, is just the beginning because you're not approving two positions today. That, 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 that's, that's unrealistic to think that you are proving two positions. What I'm hearing is you like to explore adding two positions in the first quarter budget amendment. Will bring those two positions for your consideration. And at that point, you'll see all the budget, uh, uh, impacts per se related to this particular, before you make a final decision.
That would be my, that would be, I'd be comfortable with that approach.
Let me make a comment.
Go ahead, Tom.
Robin said this had all come out of general fund? That's right. It would come out of general fund, the initial hiring. But then as citizens get in line and bring their projects forward, they are billed by CPED and then that goes in to backfill that expenditure. So they bring in their own revenue as time goes on.
So which, are you saying like businesses would be or just individual citizens? Because I know citizens are also complaining that we're getting, it's to cost too much money, right? To get, to get their permits into place and to go through this process. So when you're talking about citizens, like who are you referring to? Are you referring to like, you know, the, I'm seeing the Upcastle here or the Beaver Creek? Like those warehousing companies that are coming through? Or, uh, maybe some citizen brought application? I remember last year it was somewhat, something having to do with, um, I didn't put it on the docket. It was a citizen request to do landmarks, I believe, was, was the thing, you know? And so.
Well, there, there are citizen requests right here.
Yeah.
On the back page of that, right?
Yeah, and so the natural landmark program. And so, I mean, someone who's just, it would go into the affordability question, um, who you're referring to.
Well, I'm referring to those individuals that are gonna be wanting to move forward and create jobs and housing. And what that's going to entail is as these, we could incrementally add people. And so say this Upcastle or Beaver Creek, you know? Yes, you might have some people that say, oh, I don't want to do that because of maybe environmental issues. I don't know. But the option is right now, so I'll just take this Beaver Creek for an example, three hundred and ninety acres. They can divide that into five acre parcels and cover it with upper-end houses. And that will create a number of jobs temporarily. But if we put an industrial zone in that place, because it's in a unique environment, it's next to roads, railway interchange, that whole thing, and it's a large parcel, that creates jobs for a long period of time into the future. So, I mean, there's trade-offs on everything that we might do. Uh, the Upcastle thing is right next to a commercial, uh, a big box store that's in Lewis County. And it's, it's at the north end of the Lewis County line. This program is at the south end of the county, uptight against Lewis County. So that creates jobs by, and that's again near the freeway. So I, I believe that we can move ahead with these programs. And in the end, it isn't gonna come out of the general fund. It's gonna come from fees generated because that's what CPED does every day. They bring in a lot of revenue and they're not supposed to bring in more revenue than what they need. So I guess, I don't, I don't know exactly how that works. Robin.
Go ahead, Commissioner Mansour.
I just wanted Robin to explain the budget impact of the employees, you know, vis-à-vis the full cost recovery of CPED activities, vis-à-vis benefits and all those other things. Like how does that shake out in reality?
So the, um, the budget for the planners is paid out of general fund. And what I believe Commissioner Edwards is talking about is permits, um, development permits. And those are not deposited into the general fund. Those are deposited into the permit fund, of the permit and land use fund. And, um, we are not allowed to use the permit fund for developing our code. So the, the expense would be in the general fund for the salaries and benefits and any other ancillary cost of staff who work on the comprehensive plan and code amendments. That would not be recovered through permit fees.
Yeah, let me just tack on to that a little bit. So there's two different divisions of CPED. Brett Burris, when we talk about the hundred percent cost recovery, that's the permit and planner review. That is a hundred percent cost recovery in Brett's group. This that we're talking about now is community planning under interim manager Chris Chappou. And that is not one hundred percent cost recovery. So just to bolster what the Assistant County Manager is saying.
That is zero percent cost recovery. It's a hundred percent general fund.
Uh, I see the county manager was looking to say something.
Okay, go ahead, County Manager.
So I, I, I believe the conversation that the board is having, how you, the board, can consider adding additional resources to deal with the workload.
Deal with what?
With this workload.
Yeah, yeah.
I think this, this is probably the conversation they need to have. Will bring those two new positions for you to consider, considering the budget impacts. But I'd like to put a caution, a caution on your discussion. Just because the board, uh, provides additional resources, if that is the end result of your first quarter budget amendment, please don't get yourself in the position, just because an item is, is being worked on, is an item that's gonna be a done deal. Because every single item needs to go through a process.
Yes.
Needs to go through a public process, needs to be a vetted process by the planning commission. And the planning commission will give you a recommendation to approve this or not. So, uh, when, when, when the board discussed, which I appreciate that, uh, the discussion as to how you can support this big workload, that is great conversation. But please don't rush into a conclusion that just because you add additional support, any particular, uh, uh, request by a citizen is going to be approved. So we, we, we need to probably be careful, if I may, related to this because it's a public process that you, as a board, needs to have before you can make a final decision.
Can I?
Are you gonna have a, a question, a remark about him or another?
I just want to do a follow-up on that.
Okay, and then I want to get to, to the question.
We, we have to be cautious, but we don't have to drag our feet. So I'll just throw that out there.
Could I jump in?
Uh, go ahead, Josh.
So I just want to say thank you. That was a, that's a very helpful, again, when we, uh, consider what the outcome is, when you add additional capacity, that's going through the process. It's not whether or not the, um, application gets approved or denied for the rezone or whatever the application might be. For us, it's about facilitating the process. And I would like to just go back into the last budget cycle and say thank you for the approvals on the FTE capacity that you added. It was important to us in community planning and Chris's group in particular to have items directly related to the FTEs that we were requesting and expanding. We wanted to be judicious, uh, given that it's from the general fund and this is taxpayer dollars. But thank you for approving all of the requests that we provided to you that were specifically tied to items that the board has directed us to work on. And by all means, if the board would like to add capacity, we will do our darnedest to make sure that we increase the speed of the process, uh, that we're already engaged in. But we don't guarantee the outcomes for applicants. But we can guarantee a, uh, clear, neutral process, uh, of the application that goes through. So again, thank you for this dialogue. I do want to make sure that we have time, if possible, to run through the thirty-four items. Uh, we have just under an hour left. I don't want to shut the dialogue down, but I do want to make sure that the board has an opportunity to see these and ask questions if they'd like.
Commissioner Mansour, do you have questions?
Sorry, I'd just like to get to the docket items. Like Josh said, we've got a lot to cover.
I, I do have questions in regards to, um, page on the amendments here. Uh, page one and page seventeen. Um, and I'm just trying to kind of wrap my head on kind of why they're separated and what, what does that mean?
Two lists. So the first list, the orange list, that's the comprehensive plan. That's the vision. Yep. And then the second list is the development list. That's the blue one. And that's where the rubber meets the road.
Okay, and then, can I, can I make a, a little suggestion?
Sure.
Um, last year it was helpful because kind of dates were included of like, and, you know, uh, just based on the order. Um, I think that's, that's kind of helpful for, I, I, at least it is helpful for me, um, to kind of see how far out these, some of these things are set. And I know here we, we've, you know, like the in-progress, um, in-progress. But last year they had a little bit more information on kind of the, you know, estimated end date kind of suggestion. And I, I, I at least found that very helpful.
That's a good, that's a good suggestion. That was, we were doing that because it was the mid-cycle. And this is the reset, but we should, in the individual items, you can see when the date received is. But we can definitely make a note of that and add that column on the overview. That's a good, that's a good thought, Commissioner. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to follow on to that, uh, following the twenty-day written comment period, we plan to provide a little bit better of an idea on, uh, kind of how much staff time and, um, the length of each of these projects, uh, and how much we estimate that would take. So after that twenty-day written comment period, you will get updated, um, project sheets that will also have a backside with a little bit more information. And it will include kind of estimated completion dates like we were requesting, Commissioner, yeah.
Yeah, right now we don't know what we don't know until the public weighs in.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Maybe I can close it and then you can go on? Can I, can I do that?
Yes, okay.
Uh, I would just like to remind the commissioners, I guess, staff, all it takes is two votes from this board to tell the county manager to get her done, whatever that is. And I'm gonna use an example. One day, Commissioner, uh, Mahia and myself were talking about a meat plan and moving forward and trying to get that figured out. Now I understand you're doing quite a bit in that regard. And did you, did you get a chance to talk to Bob I L. about that today?
No, I haven't.
Oh, okay.
I need to, I need to.
I talked to him about it.
Okay.
And I was rather disappointed in the county manager when he, when that first came up. And he said, well, you, you go ahead and you get on it, Commissioner. You know, you figure, figure it out, you get on it. That's not the way this works, as far as I'm concerned. Two votes, you and me can tell the county manager to tell staff, get her done. And that's how you get things done. And he finds, figures it out, does all legal stuff, talks to legal, gets with staff. We get her done. This sitting around and talking about it forever never gets anything done. I just pointed out.
So I, I feel that I need to respond.
Okay.
To your comments.
Okay.
And that your recollection is wrong.
Okay.
Because when this issue came up at the meat plant, when you raised, Commissioner Mahia was already working on that issue.
I know.
For a long while. for a long while. And that's what I was referring to. The Commissioner Mahia was already working on this, on, um, bringing a proposal for the board to consider. So, uh, for me to accuse me that I directed a commissioner to do work is erroneous.
Well, that's what, that's what it sounded like to me.
No, sir. And Commissioner Mahia is here to, eh, eh, state exactly what happened.
Well, I'm going to call you to count on it because I think you should have offered right up. When you had two commissioners, you should have said, what can I do to help? Oh, no, you didn't say that. You said, Commissioner, go ahead on it.
Go ahead.
I didn't say, Commissioner, go ahead.
Commissioner Mahia is working on that and she has been working way before you heard about this proposal.
Oh, no.
I think we're, we're off.
Not working more than I've been working on it.
I, I think we're off topic.
Okay.
I, I do want to get forward the presentation. I do want to see the financial. Uh, and if Robin can provide that to us, that would be great. But I, I would like to see where we stand financially. Um, and kind of the sales tax and the increase in revenue, I know that's coming in. Uh, we did end up a little bit shorter because of, uh, one of my priorities, a little bit shorter than, than we wanted. But, you know, this is a priority to me. Um, seeing that there are thirty-four items, you know, it just kind of, um, makes me cringe a little bit, um, because I know there's so many important things on that docket. Um, so with that, um, I'll hand it back to Maya to continue with the presentation.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. So I think what I will do at this point, uh, is I have five more slides that go over the proposals. I will go through those, um, covering the previously officially docketed ones, uh, in a little less detail. And the new proposals in a little bit more detail. And after I get through that, those five slides, we can take questions on proposals and, uh, jump around in your packet. So that'll allow me to at least provide an overview of each of these. So starting with this slide, um, just to give an overview, these are comprehensive plan amendments and these are the board-initiated comprehensive plan amendments. So there are five of them that were, uh, passed officially docketed items. And just to give a progress on each of these, the capital improvement plan is, um, and I'm sorry, these are not in the same order as your packet. Uh, they're actually in the order of the pass forward priorities. So, um, the order of your packet is following that front page sheet. Uh, but the capital improvement program, uh, the board to take action to adopt that in the end of twenty-twenty-one. That's an annual update that is legally required on their, under the Growth Management Act. So it does get restarted each year. Uh, it, it, it's mostly process oriented on the CPED side. So we just facilitate moving that through the process appropriately. The community-driven ag review project. So we have, have had some discussions with the board on that recently to set the scope of some of the components of that. This proposal looks at ag-related policies and also programs. And an important piece of this proposal is that it responds to the Growth Management Hearings Board case back from, uh, the twenty-nineteen or the twenty-twenty comp plan adoption, uh, twenty-nineteen, I'm sorry, that requests the county look at soils, uh, data and update the long-term agriculture criteria. So there's a lot of components to that community-driven ag review project and we are moving through that appropriately. The Grand Mound Subarea Plan Update, there's been a lot of work on this project already, but it's a big and very complicated project. So it updates not only the subarea plan, which hasn't seen an update in the better part of thirty years, but it also includes seven citizen requested land use and rezone amendments. And three of those requests are to amend the UGA. So there's additional process, uh, associated with that specific project. And we're still in the research phase of that, hoping to start planning commission review this year. The Joint Plan Updates, uh, this is one docket item. It covers all of the joint plan updates, but I did want to break it down into the three bigger North County joint plans that we have. Tom Water was complete last year and adopted for the board in, uh, late November. That was a huge success. Each one of these is a big, big project. And the other two joint plans are still underway and early in the staff research phase. So we have a lot of, um, back and forth with each of those cities, Olympia and Lacey, and, uh, expecting to start planning commission review, uh, within the first half of this year for those projects. And then in the Squali Subarea Plan Update, so this was previously the lowest board priority of comp plan, board-initiated amendments. So we do have a staff person that will take this on once their other work is complete. Um, there was some work initially done on this back in twenty-nineteen. But based on that previous board priority, we haven't moved it in the last docket cycle a whole lot. So looking at the citizen-initiated amendments, uh, we have three of them that are currently carryover from the officially docketed items. You'll recall that, you may recall that there was, uh, one for planned rural residential development, the Barnett Proposal. And that application was withdrawn, uh, mid-last year, so that is no longer on the list of proposals. Um, but currently we have three, the Upcastle Land Use Amendment, the Peace Lutheran Request for Places of Worship Code Amendment, and also the Beaver Creek Land Use Amendment. So Upcastle has had a significant amount of staff work that's been invested into this project. We, uh, the county did issue a determination of significance that requires an environmental impact statement be complete for this project. And so, um, we're working with the applicant to come up with a new timeline and in that CIPA stage. And following that EIS, uh, the review will continue with the board before a final action is taken. The Peace Lutheran Places of Worship Code Amendment, uh, this has had some recent discussions with the board and the public hearing is scheduled on that for next week. So there's a very good chance that we might see a final action taken on this before, uh, an official docket is adopted this year. And then the Beaver Creek Land Use Amendment, this was added mid-cycle last year in early twenty-twenty-one. And it was, uh, prioritized as the lowest of citizen-initiated proposals at that time by the board. So we do not currently have staff assigned to it, but it does re- remain on last year's official docket, so. And looking at our, um, previously docketed code items. So this is the list of board-initiated code items and there's a lot of them on this slide. Uh, so these are larger, larger projects, whereas others are smaller projects. But just to run through them very quickly, the Reasonable Use Exceptions Project was a high board priority. Excuse me. Work is in progress on this code amendment and should be starting planning commission within the first half of this year. And then the next three items, JP dash two, three, and four are all of the UGA zoning code updates. So although these were high priorities by the board and our planning partners at the cities, uh, procedurally, we don't begin work on these until the joint plans are all complete and finished. So we do have a staff person who is going to take these on following the joint plan updates. But the joint plans are in process of being complete before we start all those UGA code amendments. Because those joint plan updates and those policy updates will better inform the specific code amendments that are needed within the urban growth areas zoning codes. The Low Impact Development Standards Code Update is a focused update the board gave a previous scope on. And this has also had significant staff work. It will begin its board review later this month and we'll probably see a completion within the first quarter of this year. The Forest Lands Conversion and Rural Tree Protection Standards Code Amendment. This previously included urban tree protection standards. But after, uh, doing some initial research in the Community Planning Division, we've updated this item to only include the Forest Lands Conversion Code Update and Rural Tree Protection Code Update. And the reason for that is that the urban tree protection component will be better reviewed with the UGA code updates under JP dash two, three, and four. So each of those UGA zoning ordinance updates will take a look at, uh, urban tree protection and we can align our UGA codes with what the cities are doing in those areas. And research has begun on this project and the board will be discussing scoping on it a little bit later this month. The Voluntary Stewardship, uh, Code Amendment and update for consistency with that. There has been some work done in the past on this to review codes to make sure that they facilitate and properly apply the voluntary stewardship program. Uh, we don't currently have staff assigned, but, uh, we're working to get staff assigned to that and move that project forward. The Boundary Line Adjustment has had some work done on it in the past and that will likely begin picking up through the planning commission process in, uh, mid-this year. But this is a legal requirement to make sure our codes are consistent with state law. The HCP Implementation Ordinance is in progress and nearing start, uh, nearing start with the planning commission. So the review will begin on that shortly in the first quarter. The Wireless Code Update is an update to the county's wireless regulations for compliance with federal, uh, standards. So this is a legal update. It's had a significant amount of work in it. And as we found out, moving through the planning compro- commission process, there was a high level of public involvement in that. So, um, we've had significant public engagement on that item. And that's why that's moving through a little bit more slowly. But we are, uh, gearing up to take that back to planning commission in the first, first quarter here. Water Availability, so, um, I'm towards the bottom of this list, about five from the bottom on this slide, A twenty-three. Water Availability is a placeholder item. So, um, the county went through the RIAA planning efforts over the last several years. And now they are in discussions with partners about what code amendments might be needed in order to implement those RIAA plans. So we expect that mid-this year, uh, there may be some code changes that are, uh, determined to be needed to better implement the water availability work that's going on in the county. The Shoreline Master Program Update, so there's been a lot of work done on this item and we've made significant process, uh, progress, excuse me. And the planning commission held a hearing late last year and continues to work towards a recommendation. Um, again, this is another item that's had a significant amount of public engagement on it. Miscellaneous Clerical Errors, so this is a placeholder item that we keep on the docket from year to year just in case there are smaller changes needed to the Thurston County Code like, uh, chapter numbering or department name change. And this allows us to go back in and make those updates. The Emergency Housing Ordinance Permitting Criteria Flexibility. So not to be confused with the interim ordinance that gets renewed every six months. The board added this to the official docket in twenty-twenty-one as a lower priority. And, um, staff time occurs with every renewal of the interim regulations. So this docket item allows, uh, staff to move those interim regulations through the public process with the planning commission and then again with the board to consider making them permanent regulations. And if they were made permanent, we would no longer have to renew those interim regulations. So back in twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, the board also asked that we look at alternatives to see if there's any way we can make that work a bit better in interim language. So, uh, that is something that staff is also investigating as part of this. But because it was a lower board priority, uh, in the mid-cycle check-in, we are moving a little bit more slowly and working on other high priority items. And then A twenty-six, the Transfer Transfer and Purchase of Development Rights Program Update. So this is pulled out from the CPA sixteen Community Driven Review of Ag. This is one component that was a high interest of the agriculture community that we found out in early surveying for that project. And, um, this is corrected, this slide that is on the screen is corrected from your packet. It is both the TDR and PDR, not just TDR. But we've pulled this out as its own docket item on the development code docket because that will allow it to move through its own legislative process without getting tied to this bigger policy, uh, update related to the comp plan. So it may go a little bit more slowly or quickly depending on, uh, board priorities if it is added to the official docket. And now I will move through the new proposals that we received in twenty-twenty-one. I have just two more slides and then I'll take questions. So we should have close to a half hour for questions on the proposals. But looking at the new proposals, so we received new, eleven new proposals in twenty-twenty-one. And seven of those were comp plan proposals and the other four were development code proposals. So, uh, going in order from left to right on this slide, the first is the Countywide Study of Industrial Lands. This was a new proposal submitted by the Planning Commission. In their review of the Upcastle Land Use Amendment, they also recommended that the county do a countywide study of industrial lands that looks at supply and demand and also need for new industrial lands. And then take a comprehensive look at where might be the most appropriate locations in the county to site these lands. Um, so there could be updates to our future land use map in, uh, in, that's found out through this study, or we might find out that there's no additional industrial land needed. But, but the short answer is that yes, there's a lot of these requests coming in and the county would benefit from a bigger study of that. And with that recommendation, the planning commission also recommended to the board that they hold off on adding any further site-specific requests for industrial land use changes uh, to the docket until completion of the study so that, that, that study can better inform where these areas should occur. So, uh, we don't need to discuss that second component in deal, detail today. But if the board, after the public comment period, is interested in adding this to the official docket, we could discuss that second piece. So that, that can come after that twenty-day comment period and we will, uh, revisit that conversation about the planning commission's recommendation. The second item is the Pogue Site-Specific Land Use and Rezoning Request. This is a citizen-initiated amendment and the request is to change one parcel of about one point five acres from Rural Residential Resource one to five to Neighborhood Commercial. It's located near Old Highway ninety-nine and Offutt Lake Road. And if you are following along in your packet, there is a map attached to, uh, page eleven that shows where in the county that is located. There are some nearby parcels zoned as Neighborhood Commercial as well. So, um, it's not a completely random change. It, it does, uh, somewhat align with nearby zoning. And Josh is holding up what that map looks like if you're following along in your packet. So the Black Lake Quarry is the next, uh, citizen request on the comp plan proposals. This is page twelve in your packet. And the request here is to change the land use and zoning of four parcels totaling roughly two hundred and seventy acres from Rural Residential one to twenty to Rural Residential Resource, um, excuse me, Rural Resource Industrial. And there's also a request to change the Thurston County Code Regulations to expand where more intensive, non-resource-based uses can be permitted in RRI to include sites that are converting from surface mines. So, uh, this is a big request that we got in. I do just quickly want to note, um, the applicant kindly let me know yesterday that I made an error to the map that is in the packet. So one of the parcels that is, uh, included on the application is not shown on that map. And I will just pull that up. So this is what the correct map should look like. Um, this parcel here at the top of the tail on the left side was accidentally left off on your packet. So I just want to correct that in your briefing materials, that that fourth parcel is also included. The acreage, however, is still correct and all of the four parcels are listed in that, on that project proposal sheet. The next one is the Bressy Request and this is another citizen request to change three parcels around seven acres from Neighborhood Commercial to Moderate Density Residential. This is a, uh, request that's located within the Lacey UGA. So there is an opportunity to roll this proposal in with a Lacey UGA joint plan. And that could minimize the staff time that's needed to process it because it would go through that process with that Lacey UGA joint plan. Uh, we don't need that direction from the board today. But following that twenty-day comment period, the board is welcome to consider rolling that. But following that twenty day comment period, the board is welcome to consider rolling that proposal in with the Lacy UGA joint plan. Um, and the city has indicated that they would be supportive of rolling that consideration into that update. Moving down to the second row, we have the MC construction land use and zoning request. This is a citizen request again, to change the land use and zoning of one parcel around fifteen acres in size from mineral extraction to low density residential. Uh, this is another proposal that's within the Lacy UGA, and there is also an opportunity to roll this one into the Lacy UGA joint plan. Uh, as I just mentioned, that could minimize the staff time that's needed to move it through the process, but we don't need that direction today. That's something we can talk more about after the comment period. Um, the city of Lacy has also indicated support to roll this one into the joint plan review. And then we have the Bar Holdings citizen request. This is a citizen request to expand the Tomwater urban growth area to include three parcels of around forty three acres and also change the land use and zoning of those three parcels from rural residential resource one to five to light industrial to allow for a variety of commercial and industrial uses. And the last uh, cop plan proposal that we received is the Scott request. This is a request uh, to zone, rezone and change the land use of two parcels from around fifty four acres from rural one to twenty to rural residential resource one to five. And this is located kind of in the southwestern part of Thurston County. Again, that's page sixteen in your packet. So last slide of new proposals, um, going over the new development code proposals. We have four of them before the board today. Two of these are brand new, uh, new applications we received in twenty twenty one. And the other two are carryover from a previous preliminary. So they were never officially docketed, but the board did leave them on a preliminary docket for future consideration. So the resource use notice, uh, resource use title notice for designated resource lands. This is a request that dates back originally from the agricultural advisory committee back in two thousand and seven. But since two thousand and seven, it's been on and off the preliminary dockets and it's changed in what it would really review. Initially, it was just looking at agriculture. And since then, it's evolved to look at also mineral lands and long-term forestry. And the request for this proposal would change procedures so that people who are purchasing property nearby to any of these tight designated resource lands, whether it be agriculture, mining, or forestry would have to sign a notice when they purchase that property and file it with the deed to acknowledge that they're near one of these resource use areas and that there might be certain types of noises or smells that they might experience. So currently, that's around seventy five percent of the county that falls within one of those three resource use areas. This is an extra notice. It would be um, implemented at the time a property is sold. It's not something that's required under state law. It's just kind of an over and beyond. So the county is already implementing all of the noticing for these areas consistent with the requirements under state law. This proposal would just be an additional um, over and beyond step that informs citizens that they're purchasing property near these areas. The second one is uh, on attachments, page thirty one, and this is clarification on non-conforming non-residential uses. So this was submitted by the hearing examiner in twenty twenty one after reviewing a few uh, permit types. And the request here is to provide clarification in the county code on expansion of these types of uses. Specifically, an example would be schools. So currently, if a school can't meet the requirements for expanding their building footprint and they're a non-conforming use, so um, you know, they're permitted in a location where um, they may not be allowed under current zoning or there are new regulations compared to when they applied originally, then they have to apply for a second type of permit called a variance. So this requires two separate permits for these folks. It requires two pathways for them to move this process through. And it's also twice the staff work in the development services team. And this request looks at seeing if there's any way we can streamline these op- types of requests and eliminate a need for that second permit type, the variance. So it would be a process improvement, uh, and we would investigate whether whether we can change code language to improve the process for these types of non-conforming uses. So they don't have to go through two separate permit processes. Looking at page thirty two, this is update sign board posting procedures. This is another new proposal, uh, just received from development services. And currently county staff are required to post and pick up following hearings with the hearing examiner for type three permit applications. And development services is requesting a change that would require the applicant posts that sign and board and then return it to the county following the hearing. So the county would make the sign, provide the information on it. And then the applicant could come pick it up, post it and uh, sign an affidavit saying that they post it and then return it following that hearing. And this would reduce county staff time in development services that is needed for that part of the process. And in turn, that could be allocated to project reviews. And then the final, uh, the final new item in the development code list is the natural landmark program. This is the very last page in your um, in your packet, page thirty seven. And this is a citizen request to add a new chapter to the county code that would preserve natural areas by creating a registry of property owners that wish to uh, preserve their land. And um, with that, just to summarize, the direction we are looking for today is to set a twenty day written comment period. Once we receive that direction from the board, uh, if there are any changes to the preliminary dockets, we can discuss that as well. But after we receive the okay to move forward on that comment period, it'll take a couple day turnaround time for us to prepare all the materials and probably within three to four days, we can start that public comment period. So we're requesting that direction by Tuesday next week. But um, anytime between then or at the board's discretion, uh, you can give us that direction. And I will open it up to questions for the board.
Okay. Uh, county manager, did you have a comment?
No, I come in a, a request for the board to consider. In two thousand and twenty one, the board received a couple of emails for the shooting zones. Uh, one in Black Lake to put some restrictions and one in uh, Lawrence Lake to ease some of the the restrictions and and shooting zones. So uh, if with the board in person, I would like to for you to consider to add it. I don't know where it will fit and what docket will fit if the board agrees on that. Uh, but that was the the um, that was my commitment to bring this item when those emails came to your attention, and that's what I'm doing. So, thank you.
I like Commissioner Edwards' suggestion. Let them just switch, switch it out. Some of the people who are shooting in Black Lake over to Lawrence Lake.
Oh, send send Lawrence Lake.
Um, okay, questions? Um, so that's one consideration that that we have. Uh, question, Commissioner Edwards?
No, I think I made enough noise today already.
Uh, questions, Commissioner Mancer?
Sure. Um, the, I'm good with the shooting zones because I heard a lot about that too. Um, another one that citizens raised that I don't know if my seatmates have interest in was about, and I think I was told that this would be the time to bring it up, was about extending our CIPA, like public input timeline because uh, they were told it was fourteen days and if it's complicated and they needed to get like a consult with an expert or something like there's, and and they're like a nonprofit group, like they couldn't convene their group, allocate money, hire an expert. I mean, it's just the argument was it's totally unreasonable to expect them to provide any meaningful input in a fourteen day notice period and would we consider extending that? And I don't know if that's a good idea or bad idea, but it's something I promised to have, you know, bring to the board for consideration as being readdressed. And then my question, the only question I had, a lot of them were answered along the way. Of course, I have questions about all the new things, but I'll look at the maps. The one that is on an existing status of water availability placeholder regarding implementation of RIAA plans. So does anybody know the status of that? Because our plan didn't get approved and it went to ecology for rulemaking. So are we gonna see in twen- I mean, I need to know how to prioritize that item. Are we gonna see and do we think we're gonna see in twenty twenty two a set of ru- watershed ru- rules from ecology? Or does anybody know where that stands?
Yeah, so, okay, thank you. Um, so we have been in contact with ecology, um, because they are going through the rulemaking process. We do hope to see that in twenty twenty two they can't provide us a more certain timeframe than they're working on it. We'll see it soon. So we are, to the best of our ability, um, contacting them um, frequently to make sure that uh, we have the most best up-to-date information so that we can provide that to management, the board, and it can inform our work.
So the idea is they may, they may issue a set of rules that then require us to make some changes to our code?
Potentially. Um, there are other studies going on in the um, areas where Ri- the RIAA plans have been um, completed, and there may be some adjustments needed to our development code docket um, to implement some of the um, projects or things that the group would like to see happen around um, stream flow restoration um, in those areas. So we'll have a, some more information. Lots working on a study and we'll have better information once that's completed here very soon.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
Well, one thing I I think I know, understand, I just want to clarify or confirm my understanding. When we passed the Tomwater joint plan and then there were like code, there was like code provisions identified that needed to be looked at, is that what then folds into this existing item where it's Tomwater UGA code amendments or whatever?
Yes, and all of those will go through the legislative process as part of that item.
Okay, very good. I I'll leave it there for now. Go ahead, Josh.
So Commissioner, I wanted to address the first statement on the CIPA. So yes, we've heard some of those same comments uh, from individuals in the community about uh, lengthening the review time of CIPA. We've also heard comments from different sectors of the community asking us to shorten the review time of CIPA in different areas. And I have requested directly of both of those parties and provided them the form to apply for uh, uh, one of the docket code items to be listed. And that happened, that was requested earlier in the year, a couple of different times. And this, uh, we were waiting for something to arrive from either one of those parties. Before November fifteenth, we received nothing from either one of the perspectives to lengthen or shorten the CIPA review process, which is why you don't see it here.
Okay, thank you, Josh.
Okay. Um, I also want to add another item to the docket. Um, just because, you know, there's not enough already, it seems, but um, and this was something that uh, I I gained experience on through uh, the Juanita Torman case. And it was something that uh, we talked about and it's kind of revising our codes in relation to small businesses in Thurston County. And um, I'm I'm seeing um, this kind of economic development movement going on in Thurston County where uh, several people want to open small businesses and I just want to make sure that we are up to date on our codes and we have the resources to be able to offer to to these people who are um, trying to to open their small businesses here. Um, so I I know Juanita Termin had a very extensive permit process and and she relayed her experiences to us and I think that was a kind of a lesson learned kind of situation and and I think we should keep evolving our codes and and um, Josh, you had mentioned that during this process, it would be the right time to to bring something like this up. So that's why I'm bringing it up now.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner. And that's exactly right. So we all, this is the time where we accept also commissioner-initiated items. I do know that um, Will Brett Burris has been working with Juanita Torman on her project specifically. And so I'll try and work with Brett to see what she is referencing that could be changed in the code and whether or not it needs to be a part of the docket as well.
Okay. And I didn't have any specific questions on anything.
I'm good. So uh, Commissioner, if you have at this point enough information that I can bring this item for uh, on the eighteenth, I will do next Tuesday. Um, again, the request is for you to direct the staff to have all this list uh, go through a public process. As Chris stated, it's not a public hearing, it's a comment period. And after the comment periods, that will come back and provide you with all the public testimony of bring comments that you have received.
I am actually gonna ask that this be not for the eighteenth, but for the twenty fifth, I feel for the eighteenth. Our agenda setting is already, we have the two public or one from public works, one from emergency services presentation. I feel like we we kind of rescheduled a couple of things that we couldn't get through this item. So I feel this one there will be other questions that come forward once, you know, each one of us has a chance to to go over each of the items. Um, but I'm not sure how the rest of the commissioners feel on it.
I'm good.
I'm fine to set the, just to take the action to set the the written comment period. That's all we're doing. Um, so I'm good with that part of it.
So for the eighteenth then?
So, cool.
Well?
If you don't want it on the eighteenth.
Well, if we're, if all were, we're not doing the whole conversation on on each of the items at that point. Okay, then, that's okay then. I'm I'm okay with it. We're just setting up a, a public hearing, then I'm okay with that.
Just to give you the time to review the descriptions that I provided today, uh, they I bring the generic, generic team just to for you to provide direction on going through the public comment period.
Is that gonna be, are we gonna go through and individually pick out which ones?
No, no, you, no, no, that comes later.
Okay.
That comes later, your decision-making process to individually where you want to put each of the items. This is just a global public comment.
Okay.
Um, I do ask the the question when the, and maybe uh, Josh or Kristen, where the board can vote on the new items that has been provided to you uh, today? Shooting zones, CIPA, uh, because a, as a commissioner requested that to be revised as well as the small business uh, code changes. Um, where will that decision be made? Do the board needs to give a thumbs up or down on those three items before uh, this whole pocket goes to the public comment?
Yes, they do. And I was actually gonna ask the team, uh, Maya and Chris, what they needed on those three items for public comment to proceed. But maybe, maybe the thumbs up is first.
Yeah, so the thumbs up is first. We do need to include those items on the preliminary docket that goes out for public comments. So the public has the opportunity to weigh in on them. Um, and it, the other uh, the other thing that I would um, ask for is kind of just generally what parts of the code they're impacting. So uh, the small businesses one, I have a pretty good idea of what sections of codes that might impact, probably the zoning ordinances. Um, the no shooting zones, that is uh, potentially impacting sections of code that don't need to go through the docketting process. Um, so there could be a separate pathway forward for those items, but we could certainly include it on the docket if the board wishes to. And then extending the CIPA timeline, as Josh mentioned, we did not receive applications on that. Uh, but that's a specific section of code that um, we can just reference. So really the um, if there's any further information how on the small businesses one, Commissioner Leah, that would be helpful. And then a thumbs up or down.
That'll be on me to get the small business information to you, Maya.
Josh.
But so I, I think, I think you can just, you kind of a catch-all if they give us a thumbs up, right?
Yeah.
Thumbs up, thumbs down on this.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Um, okay, so uh, thumbs up on uh, is there any commissioner that's opposed to any of the three proposals? Okay, so thumb up on those three, okay. Okay, so thumb up on the three. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Minzer.
So I'm supporting shooting zones. I I the the CIPA, I mean, Josh asked for input, we didn't, we didn't get it. Although I'm wondering, it's so simple that I'm wondering if we just put it on the, how difficult is it to just put it on the out for public comment, see if if these parties comment or if anyone comments. So I'm I'm open to that. The small business, I don't know what this is about. I apologize. Juanita Tormann, that's not ringing a bell. I have no idea what you're talking about, so I don't have an opinion about that.
So, yeah, so for the small businesses, it's just kind of, there's some of our codes that are outdated in a sense. And it's providing small business owners who are going through the process, a sometimes longer process. And it's very strenuous, it's very expensive, and it sometimes it's a deterrent. And so I just kind of, there is some specifics and I'm sorry, I can't like think of it at the top of my head right now. But it's just.
Maya said she thought she knew what you were talking about. Maybe Maya can put it into planners terms or code term. Are we talking about like a streamlined pathway for a small business applicant or something?
Yeah, I have a, I have a gist of what section of code this would impact. I don't know the specifics, but our our special use permit process typically handles these types of applications for small businesses. So it would likely be looking at that special use permit process for certain types of businesses. And without knowing the application, there might be a very specific thing, or it could just be general home based businesses. So we could certainly get that information. But absolutely, at this stage, there's no issue in putting something like that on the preliminary docket to see what the public has to weigh in on it for.
And I think back to Commissioner Minzer's other question, you reference it with the title and then I'll link it back to the section of code. So it's not a heavy lift, Commissioner Minzer, to add those items.
Okay, well, I'm up for public comment on anything that, you know, commissioner's interested in. You can always vote it down or to hold.
So I'll go ahead and do it separately, just so there's clarity for for staff. The first suggestion was the shooting zones, so thumbs up commissioners, thumbs down. Okay, so three thumbs up. The next one is the CIPA deadlines. Thumbs up commissioners. Okay, and then the third was the small businesses code amendments. Thumbs up, okay. So. Is that good? Josh?
Yeah, then, if I recall, the county manager said you guys will have this conversation on January 18th to set the 20 day comment period. Remember, it's not a public hearing, it's just written comment period.
Okay.
Just to give the commissioners the opportunity to read any any descriptions of the items that will be here.
And then when will, will the hearing where we review each of the items, when will that be said? Will that be said after written comment?
That's correct.
Yes, as soon as we issue the legal notice for the written comment period, I will get on the board's calendar to go over all the comment we receive. And so that will likely be sometime in mid towards the end of February that we return with that.
Okay. Anything else, commissioners? Okay, and then with Commissioner Edwards, we'll be waiting on kind of more to come from our assistant county manager, Robin, for kind of where we are financially and for the two extra position FTEs for for CIPA. Okay, anything else, Commissioner Minzer?
No, thank you.
Okay, so with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.